I was cutting the clothes, everybody.
Yeah.
Welcome everybody to the May 2025 Bladen County Board of Education meeting. Man, we got a big crowd here tonight. A lot to celebrate, a lot to recognize. So let's get things started on Mr. Edwards giving the invitation.
Most proud. Dear Lord, as we come into the May 20th meeting, I pray that you give us the knowledge, wisdom to make correct decisions for the students, staff. Also, as we send out another group into the world in graduation, we pray that we have given them the wisdom to be successful and carry on and prosper in the future. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you Chairman, Secretary, Board Members. Tonight we have students from Bladen Lakes Primary who will lead us in the place of leaders. We have Leonardo Alvarado, Haylen Knuth, Ava Dorsett, Olivia Burton, and Zoe Skinner.
Get a motion on the floor to approve tonight's agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second, second has been given. All those in favor by signify by saying aye, please. All opposed? Ayes have it. By point 01, approval of consent agenda. I'd get a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda for tonight. Yeah. Second has been, has been given. All those in favor by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. You spotlights and recognition directs.
Thank you Chairman, Secretary, and Board Members. We do have several recognitions tonight, and we're going to begin with Bladen Lakes Primary Beta Club students, and Ms. George Spencer, our principal, will be calling their names tonight.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is my pleasure to welcome our Bladen Lakes Cat and Cat family. We did offer the wonderful ads or beta club. Leonardo Alvarado, first place, black and white photography, and the third place, woodwork setting. Haley Knew, second place, cake decorating. Marley Julian, third place, digital art. Olivia Burton, third place, performing arts variety act, and first place, woodworking. Scarlett Stephen, fourth place, pottery. Zoe Skinner, fourth place, recyclable art. Gustavo Diaz-Leno, fourth place, sculptress, elementary. Thank you very much to our lovely and wonderful beta sponsors, Mrs. Angela Butcher. Is this Emily Higgins? The teacher, Hayes Jones. And this is Mark Fisher-Bunn. And also Miss Ava Dorsett, who was placed. Additionally, at the state beta convention, Bladen Lakes beta placed third in apparel design, first in club training pins, third in engineering, second in song test, first in three dimensional design, and first in two dimensional design. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Now we have recognizing Bladenboro Middle School Beta Club students. Ms. Jennifer Marlowe, principal, will be calling those names for us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Marlowe, Principal Bladenboro Middle, home of the Bulldog. All right. So we had a tremendous time at the beta convention this year. Our students showed up, showed out, and we are so proud of them. We've got lots of individual awards, just a few folks who were present with us this evening though, because we've got lots going on this time of year. But we'll start with our elementary data students, Ms. Annabelle Bordeaux, second place, in good grade math. Walker Durden, second place, painting. And then from our junior beta club, Mr. Jackson Britt, second place, digital art. I'd like to recognize our major sponsors, Ashley Johnson, Marlena Walters, Nicole Pinlaw, Haley Baxley, and Ms. Jessica Rhodes, who I think is here with us. She's hiding back there. We have Karen, sponsor too. She's hiding behind me, with Stephanie Thurman. Potentially having six mentions this year. We also placed fifth in elementary campaign skit, fourth in elementary digital portfolio, fifth in elementary performing arts, small group, third in elementary technology, second in elementary three dimensional design, third in junior apparel design, third in junior performing arts trio variety act, first in junior performing arts large group, third in junior technology, second in junior three dimensional design, and third in junior two dimensional design. Thank you, Secretary.
Next, we have Clarkton School Discovery Beta Club. Fisting us with the names tonight is their Assistant Principal, Dr. Sandra Evans.
Good evening, Chairman, Secretary, Board Members, Dr. Atkinson. I am so pleased to be here tonight, home of the Blue Devils, Clarkton School Discovery. Had a wonderful turnout at the state Beta Club Convention. I am pleased, beyond pleased, and honored to be bringing home our North Carolina Junior Beta President, Ms. Araya Deal. We also have Ms. T. A. Jackson, second place, sixth grade computer science. Rosie Ward, first place, sixth grade help physical education. Ms. Casey Nolan Hood, first place, eighth grade help physical education. Ms. Ma Johnson, third place, seventh grade line of arts. Ms. Mally Lindsay, a premier performer singer, and first place, sixth grade science. Ms. Owen Hall, first place, seventh grade science. Third place, sixth grade spelling. Ms. Ben Drummens, first place, seventh grade US history. Had been able to do this without our wonderful sponsor, and that is Ms. Elizabeth Priest. The Clarkton School of Discovery's eighth place, first in accessorized design, first in campaign skit, first in digital portfolio, in performing arts large group, second in scrapbook, third in service learning showcase, second in song quiz, and first in 2D digital. Beta students brought home over twenty awards.
Next, we'll have our East Bladen High School Envirothon winners. Ms. Dana Myers, our CT Director, will be recognizing those.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. So we have very busy participants on this team. Mr. Eric Hartfield is representing his team of Tyler Eaton, Rich Gooden, James Hatcher, Valentine McBoyd, and Taylor Reddinger. The Envirothon competition was held at Dona's Lake, and we are very excited that East Bladen FFA have representation. It seemed very well. The Envirothon competition was held at Dona's Lake and we are very excited that East Bladen FFA have representation. It seemed very well.
Next, we'll be recognizing East Bladen High School students who have achieved their SERVE Safe Certification, Ms. Myers.
At East Bladen High School, Ms. Kathy Fraser teaches food and nutrition too. As a part of this class, students have the opportunity to earn the SERVE Safe Food Manager Certification. This is offered through the National Restaurant Association and makes students more marketable as a restaurant industry employee. The students tonight are Tatum Allen and Elise Hall. Ms. Fraser had several students who could not be with us tonight. The teacher is Ms. Kathy Fraser.
Next, we have the West Bladen High School students who achieved their SERVE Safe Certification, Ms. Myers.
This was the same certification offered in the same class by Ms. Debbie Kinlaw at West Bladen High School. Our first student is Megan Bird. Leslie Lemus Basilio. The Skinner also had a few students who could not be with us.
Good evening. My name is Georgia Spalding and as Principal of East Bladen High School, it is truly an honor to introduce to you our Lady Eagle Basketball Team as our North Carolina High School Athletic Association's 1A State Vow Up, 1A Eastern Regional Champions and Welcome Mile Conference Champions. We have with us tonight, Nene Ward, Conference Player of the Year, Second Team All District, State Championship 14th. Dana Bryan. Alia Manzo. Ariel Tormarty. Abria Baldwin. Chalea Freeman. Ted Mallon. Ms. Naeem Semper. Taylor Dallas. Lady Smith. Lady Smith was our state championship outstanding player and third team all district. Eva McCoy. May Wu. O'Neil Flowers. Our Assistant Coach, Alan West. Megan Murphy. Asia Graham. Our statistician, Ms. Quinn Henry. All Coach Places under the leadership of Patty Evers, who was Conference Coach of the Year.
Next, we'll have uh, West Bladen High School Beta Club uh, calling out the names tonight, Ms. Jennifer Marlowe, Principal.
I'm the Principal of West Bladen High School. Uh, I get honored to call out the West Bladen High School Beta. Erin Page, first place, fourth grade athletics. Caroline Musso White, first place, Olympic champion, the big junior. Tina Durman, fourth place, eleventh grade French Premier Performer. Uridia Santana Dominguez, fifth place, fourth grade math. Kylie Lugabell, fourth place, Willie Division One. I'm actually very proud of you. I'm Chair of Paralympics. Additionally, I have certain band extensions that claim to be placed fifth in performing arts variety act and fourth in performing arts large group.
Next, we'll be recognizing the West Bladen High School uh, Boys Basketball.
The West Bladen High School Basketball Team was 2024 Bladen Off-Road Christmas Tournament, the 2025 SAC Six Conference Champions and the NCHSA A2A Final Four. First player we recognize is Jackson Page. He was District Two's first team audition. Hannah Adams. Marion Ryan. Kylie Bacall. Indel Lassane. Connor Monroe. Demarri Adams Peterson. Kylie Ballard. Case Williams. He was the sixth Player of the Year, District Two Player of the Year and played in the North-South All-Star Classic. Dustin Spalding. Connor Hester. Isaiah Robinson. Pablo Zatko. They were led by their head coach Travis Page. Coach of the Years, District Two Coach of the Years and the NCBCA State Coach of the Year. Assistant coaches are Jason Henley. Matt Hill. Joe Harris. Darren Rupp. Of course, Coach Secretary.
There's the board members that include our spotlights and recognitions.
It is time we'll move to uh, question number seven, citizen participation, Dr. X.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, Secretary. We do have two that have signed up tonight. Mr. Larry Freeman, number one. And Mr. Edward Smith, number two. According to Board Policy 2310, the first part of at least one regular scheduled board meeting, they set aside a citizen to address the board's Republican. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed thirty minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. In the public comment period, the board chair will recognize citizens in the order in which they have signed in. Such as speakers will not be permitted and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Okay, Mr. Larry Freeman first.
Yes, good evening, Board. We are honored to be had this opportunity to come with him this evening. Uh, well, I wanted to come to you. I have employee benefits exactly the health, confidence, ANC. And what we do, you guys already have a group plan for insurance. You don't bother that. You don't try to adjust it. You don't try to alter it all. What we do, we offer fifteen additional benefits to your employees that are preventative care. You guys have a reactive care. Somebody gets sick, go to the doctor. We're trying to prevent that. And what the government is allowing us to do, to use our IRIS Tax Code 125, our cheer plan, to lower the taxable income of the employee, create a tax savings, where they can use that tax savings to pay for our program, plus get additional benefits. Uh, we actually have a partnership with Allstate Insurance that they can get a life insurance policy up to a hundred thousand dollars. Now, how this is paid for, once the tax savings is there, I will put this here, we are not allowed to change their net pay, what they are making now. So what this does, with the tax savings that's generated, what it's going to do is going to pay our portion of the program and what it's going to do, it's going to give them the extra money to spend on other additional benefits besides the fifteen additional benefits that we give, such as mammograms, colonoscopy, generic drugs, urgent care visits. All of these charges and services are no cost, no copay. You get a card from our company, you take it if you go get a colonoscopy or mammogram, show that card, you pay nothing. What this is going to do for the employer, because the tax savings is generated for the employee, the employer is going to see a tax saving also. Uh, we know as employers, once an employee pays FICO taxes, you have to match it. What this company allows us to do, let's say for instance, give a number of thousand dollars, if that employee pays a thousand dollars in FICO taxes, the company has to match it. But this program is saying, look, for every employee that joins and is qualified for this program, we're going to allow you to keep on average five to six hundred dollars per employee in your budget. So you take that five or six hundred dollars multiplied by the number of employees that you have, that's what you're going to save in FICO taxes every year. So it's a win-win situation. And in my nineteen seconds left, what I'll tell you is this, you already paying this money, you already paying the FICO taxes. So why not save that money into your budget to do other things? And what I would like to do to come back at a set time with the board to do an official presentation, to meet our, our company uh, co-founder and CEO, and when you guys have the available time, it takes about fifteen, twenty minutes and I'll come back. I'll be your partner, because I want to tell you about the uh, management program that we have, AI. I'm going over my time this tomorrow, okay? AI. You get an app that downloads to your phone. If the app is downloaded to your phone, you do, you do actual series of health questions. It's going to give you a health score. So it's going to help you better your health. It's going to give you ideas, suggestions, what you could do. If you ask a question, say I drink five mixed drinks a week, it's going to tell you, cut it back to two or three, you know, raise your health score. Well, I'll tell the story in my end. We had a lady in the program that she was doing the facial risk condition every week. She was doing it two or three times a week, found out that her blood pressure was increased. At the end of the week, told her, go see your uh, primary care doctor or we can make an appointment for you. Long story short, found out she had a blockage. That's why her heart blood pressure was coming, her blood pressure was rising. That's the technology of today, AI. That's what the program allows you to have. Thanks for your time. Hopefully I'll hear from you. I sent all of you an email. You should have a video and everything. I'll send all the board email. You should have that information and uh, hopefully we'll hear from you soon.
Is he able to get in contact with Ms. Guyton over human resources since this is going to be something related to employees or at least explored in that way?
Well, please ask him for a whole presentation. I'll need to meet with him first. I'll set up for you also, or we can meet with him together. But Ms. Frank, can you make sure to get your contact information? We'll set up a time to. Uh, next we have Mr. Edward Smith.
How was your last one, talking about Bladenboro Alumni?
Yeah, how was your last one, talking about the Plaimby Alumni Association? I don't want to be redundant on what I'm saying, but I want you to see it in black and white, what we're talking about. Before, I was just talking in words, or just words. If it's not written out, then everybody forget about it. So I've written, I wrote everything out, I'm not going to, uh, insult your intelligence, because I know everybody can read. But what I'm saying, I want you to look over this here, if there are any questions that the board has at this particular time, feel free to ask, ask me the questions about what we're trying to do with this, and basically, print out of what we are, what we are trying to do with the Plaimby area, because everybody knows that it's a rural area, there's nothing up there, and it was just the opportunity that they have a school that's vacant, that could help educate people and help do things for the neighborhood, the community, and, uh, everything, and we got a whole lot of new people that are moving in. So this area is drawing people, and so what I'm saying is, if we don't do something, they're building houses, yeah, but why should I move to that area and nothing there? You understand what I'm saying? And then, another thing, Saipole and Lomond are stealing some of the plans that we should be doing in town here from the plant and being all that. So let's try to keep, let's try to do something in Blaine County, to help build up our county, and help, help our kids, because it's a win-win situation in so many words, uh, what we are, what we are trying to do.
Just a couple of things, I know that you presented it last month, and there was a lot of information, and it probably came at you as an, uh, implosion coming from different directions, and I'd like to see that a lot of those ideas are here, but where are we with, uh, some of these things, I think it was mentioned to speak to a legislator, um, representative, and some of that stuff, trying to expedite the process, and a little louder, okay, got you. So there was, uh, a lot of conversation during the last presentation that I shared, and how to move forward. I think you needed to contact the representative, legislator, and different folks to be able to expedite the process, or at least move in the right direction. This is a follow-up, where are we with that?
I did follow up, I talked to some people, like, some of the programs, you got teachers saying that they would, they would actually volunteer. We got, uh, I talked to some of the people that's building the houses in the area, uh, Mr. Pear, he said that, uh, he would, uh, like to be in with it, uh, with the program, because it's going to help, now I'm going to talk to the pastors and stuff, and the neighborhood, and we're already involved in the P O H club in this, in this, out there. So all we're trying to do is get the process so, that, and Linda Richardson, she's in, she's the head of the P O H club. So that's all, we're already, we're already working on, we're already working on these areas. But I'm proud of you, this right here, we have a community building, per se, that somebody lessons use once a month. But what I'm saying, we have classrooms that, say for instance, if you want to do a, a small business in a classroom, uh, you can do it, if you want, if you want to do a flea market, once a month, they're on Saturdays, the people that bring stuff in, uh, people don't come way down here to Littlestown to the flea market, you know, let's be real, uh. So, and then we got farmer's market, we can do a farmer's market up there, because we got everybody raising vegetables and different stuff up there. So it's going, it's going to help the neighborhood, uh, the mentoring program. Uh, I'd like this right here, there should be no kids left behind or nothing. If we start, if we get to talking to them in the first and second grade, and work with the teachers, we should, we should be able to get with them, and help them out and find out what they're good at, and try to work towards that goal. I want to get the people in the neighborhood, and start working more with the school. I guarantee you, I can guarantee this, if we get this, and we start working with playing, we're talking to school, you will see a difference in the school, and you will see a difference in the behavior in the kids in that area. I'm saying, let's don't let it get away like some areas get away, and that's, that's one, that's one of the main things, too.
Mrs. Smith, I think you've had some good things on there, awesome things, and I think that you have good intentions, and if these things are, um, are done, it's definitely going to be a positive impact in the community. Speaking for Anthony, I want to see you with the building, want to see you be able to do, in the, uh, Plaimby Alumni Association, be able to do the thing that you said that you're able to do. Uh, if, if you will, Dr. Akleton, if you could share again, what his first step is, and who he needs to contact to be sure he can do this, and it will be at no cost, because I think that that's how it goes, is what you shared last time, and so that way we'll know, and I'm going to write it down this time, I said, because I can't, I can't begrudge to take everything that was said that time, so that way I remember, so then this way, we can have a conversation, and then we'll know who to contact, and we can make this happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Smith and some others, maybe with Mr. Brown and I, actually, uh, last week, uh, and we kind of talked through, I was going to share some students today, but y'all won't, um, allow me, I'll just mention this here. Um, and we talked through kind of the process, uh, drafting a letter to legislators, uh, we actually, you know, double-checked who would be representing House and Senate for, for our area, as well as even the federal, I said it wouldn't hurt to also do that. Uh, and, uh, as we were talking, we thought that one thing that may potentially be of good support, uh, and just just send the letter, and also schedule a meeting, uh, with the local representatives, uh, was potentially, uh, if the board, and I, I mentioned, I told I was to hear this, uh, in, especially with the educational purposes, uh, that will be listed here, and things that be doing, if the board would potentially be interested in, uh, doing a resolution of support for that project to accompany, uh, maybe that letter, as well as Mr. Smith, and, and we talked as well about maybe doing, also doing that with the county commissioners. Uh, and so, um, the way around, and Mr. Grady can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, outside of the legislation, it would be to get it appended to a bill, it could be a separate bill, be adding, a lot of times they add things to different types of bills. Um, if, if that was to be the case, uh, and it was to pass, obviously, uh, it would go outside the legislation where it has to be sold for a market value. Uh, but if that's something that the board is interested in, potentially entertaining, I shared with Mr. Smith that I would mention this tonight, I can draft, uh, a resolution, and also work with Mr. Grady on that. Like, if that's the, you know, something the board wants to review, potentially do, uh, we could bring that back to the June ninth board meeting. Uh, and if that's something the board would pass, that would be a basically supportive, the board saying, we support, you know, educational initiatives and things you could want to do in the building. Uh, and as we talked, we thought that if that was a possibility, uh, obviously, I told we couldn't speak for the board or county commissioners, but that, that was to be done on both ends, that would show those legislators, not only, you know, the, the, the need and what Alumni Association, the community wants to do, that would show that the governing body and the education system also are supportive of that being an opportunity for the community there as well.
Let's add that to the agenda, let's make it an action item, so we can go ahead and make that, go ahead and get that in the process, yes, sir.
Did you mention, uh, Mr. Liam Brilson, or last, last time?
We did, yes, sir.
And anybody contacted Mr. Brilson?
No, yet, no. Uh, I think we're kind of wanting to get everything drafted, so we're going to take, we'll be able to take these things from the resolution, but, um, I don't know, I know, um, actually, the state legislators are a little bit easier, I think, to contact, they ask for either phone numbers, we don't, but you got to know them. And so, uh, you know, they do have that information, uh, and I told them, I said, it's going to be a fit to them, I, I told them, I would not see, I wouldn't think it'd be an issue for us to, to do that, and that, and again, I think that would be a good space effort, if that's something the board's interested, obviously, doing, to have the board behind that, as well as the county commission, and then that might open up other doors, and even on the federal side, potentially for some grants and things. Uh, one thing we talked about, what's the Twenty First Century Grant that the, uh, D P I actually manages now, as a possible opportunity that they could, could do. Uh, it, it, it's changed a lot from what it used to be, it used to be just systems, now it's open, uh, even to nonprofits, which the Alumni Association is. Um, and so that could help support some of those things there. Uh, but, you know, I, I think that, uh, and we had a good conversation, uh, Friday, and, uh, I think that, obviously, that would be something, you know, I was willing to do if you all would be interested in that, and I think that would carry a lot of weight, uh, when this letter goes, to have a resolution from the board, and potentially, uh, county commissioner, so, uh, Mr. Smith, when we talk, if we are take action on the night for that, and he can turn around the next week, go to the commissioners, their second meeting of June, and ask them to do the same thing, potentially.
I mean, I would love to see a, like, an information section, so we could ask certain questions on, some of the stuff I'm not for sure, of, you know, the legal standpoint, we give Gary, Dr. Axon, and a couple of them to be able to, you know, probably have the answers we need before we do it, but I'm all for the resolution, that's good for the community.
Yes, sir.
It's there, it's something that, um, you taking us on is, um, to come and contribute to the people in that part of the community. Um, as I'm looking at the, the, um, groups that you're talking about bringing in, and, uh, things that you're interested in providing to people in that community. I think, I think it, it's, it's awesome. Um, so, I have some, um, some people that I'm going to get, allow to get in contact with you, to help you get some things started, um, with these people that you have listed here. Um, I'm also for the resolution, and I think we need to make this happen, um, the community needs it.
What's happening, another nonprofit and a church to get you a, a letter of support as well, so the more you have, it's probably going to be a little better for you.
You should send those contacts out to us as well, we might, uh, would send our, uh,
I mentioned that, too.
Support as well.
Got to, uh, there's also, um, we mentioned Towns Tar Heel, um, like I said, churches are the ones that would be, um, any, any letters of support that could back that would, would definitely be, uh, tremendous. Um, and I, I think that, you know, obviously, you know, we talked about the lack of recreation and things like that. Well, Mr. Smith had looked at the, uh, property, of course, we have to, obviously, look, because I know it's a big wooded area, but it's about seven acres, I think, total.
Eight or five acres, that they're playing, that's what they have on, that's what they have on the direct route, come back. There's a lot of ground back behind it, basketball courts and stuff like that, for kids to do, in, in a park, uh. I'm asking for y'all help, and my main thing is this right here, I'm not, I don't like to get nothing free, I don't like to give people free stuff, but you get free stuff, you take it for granted. I just want the same opportunity that everybody else got, when they got the different schools, just give me the same, just, just give me the same opportunity to do, to show y'all, to prove that we can make it work.
Mm-hmm.
Because what I'm saying is, the kind has everything to gain and nothing to lose.
For sure.
But I thank y'all for y'all time, you know, hey, y'all want the same thing I want, the best for Blaine County, the best for the town.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, yes, sir, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to action item eight point zero one, fencing project for Bladen Lakes Primary School.
That project, I want to move forward with the fencing project at Bladen Lakes Primary School. Uh, we got a safety grant that will cover the expenses of having that school fenced around. Uh, as you know, we're Bladen Lakes, that is out in the open, there's been incidents with stray dogs, even people walking behind it at night, so it needs to be fenced off and protected, so when the little kids come in the next time, or the next day, or the next week, strangers is on campus, so it can be locked up and secured. Uh, at all costs, us, any money is coming off of a grant, so why don't you get local money to pay for it, so just asking permission to move forward with it.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Excuse me, uh, you have two projects? You have two, you looking at, which one you looking at?
Blaine makes fence.
Yeah, I mean, you, you had two, uh, bids, didn't you?
What's that?
Yeah. Which one you go with?
Uh, it's, it's seven thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars.
Oh, okay.
And Sentinel was like a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, but it was the same thing, it's like thirty-four hundred foot of fence.
Who, who's the first one with, hundred and seven one?
Hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and forty-six seven dollars.
Who's it with?
B and W.
B W.
B and W.
B and W. And the second one, where, where to?
One thirty-nine, eight thirty-three.
Who's it with?
Daniel Fenton.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I got a motion on the floor to approve the fencing project for Bladen Lakes Primary School, um, all those in favor by signifying by saying aye, all opposed to motion carriers, thank you, Ben, appreciate you. On my action item, uh, nine, closed session, uh, to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel as per N C G S one four three, three eighteen point eleven, to consult with attorney if needed, as per N C G S one four three, three eighteen point eleven, and to discuss student reassignments to the discipline as per the nineteen seventy-four Family Rights and Privacy Act. You know, motion to, I got it, sorry. I knew where we're going anyway, so, all those in favor saying aye, all opposed, all right.
I hadn't seen anything here.
You said you did?
I did not know I didn't receive anything here.
I didn't.
So we have a plan in place and we talked about the employee that dropped ten dollars last from last month. We just some things I guess to be sure that we have bus drivers that is just everyone doesn't have a vehicle. That's the fact of the matter. We don't have Uber or Lyft or anything in our area, unfortunately. And so whenever a bus route is canceled, it's almost like, well, what can I do? All I can do is ask folks to drive the bus. But I know that Ms. Spalding at East Blading at one time, she said that she drove the bus as well as she was the principal. I was trying to get more bus drivers so that these things don't happen because I was told like a lot of kids had to catch rides or parents had to send other folks and it was really, really, I don't want to say inconvenient, but it was a daunting task for those folks that arrange transportation last minute.
Well, and honestly, that is a difficult thing across the state. When you've got cities that are paying twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty-seven dollars to drive their city transit buses, they're, they're jumping ship and going. There's a shortage across everywhere. The, the, the challenge is that, you know, we, we may get somebody hired and then they get an offer and can't blame them because the difference between fifteen, sixteen, whatever dollars an hour versus twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. You know, they try as like, and what happened in the primary school and Ms. Brown, correct if I'm wrong. Yesterday was they had a sub driver, I think, got sick like about an hour before school went out. And that's why they that they try, the school tries when they can to do with double route and that, that just makes it even worse. When they can and sometimes try to buy them on other buses and, and try to get, now to work that through. Uh, we have had a few teachers, uh, it's not smiled upon, but you can do it. Uh, we have had some teachers that have stepped up and we, we can pay them, uh, separate, uh, to, to do some driving. And so, uh, we, we had the bus classes. The challenge is, uh, and Mr. Kinsey was stretched out so far. We, cause he does the bus driver training, um, and he does all those commercial folks that, you know, we have a class maybe once a quarter. We, we probably could try to have more often if they could do it, but he's, he's the only one in this area that does those. Uh, and so he not only is he doing the class, he has to do the road test. And so it ties a lot of his time. Uh, and some people come take the class with us and they're going to come on board and then they take a job, uh, with the city system and we trained. And so, um, you know, uh, it, it is a difficult, what's going to have to happen and, and is there's got to be some difference made at the state to provide additional funding and, and I don't want to leave out some other important folks too, that, I mean, every employee is imported, but think about our cafeteria workers. Uh, who are, are, you know, not in salaries still some of the lowest one in, in the school system. And we got a lot of committed folks who have served in that. That's another group that often does not, if it's, you know, we get the one, two percent that the state offers, uh, then you know, what happens in child nutrition is that program's got to be self-sufficient. Try to pay those hours if not, and the school system has to take. So we've got an issue bus driver now, fortunately cafeteria staff, we're pretty well staffed and we, and, and that's been a blessing. We've got a lot of folks that at some point maybe where they can, you know, make their choices as they, as they resume a career. So, you know, we think about all areas in the school system. We, it is, it is challenging to compete with the business world and all they can throw at people. And that's what it boils down to is that they can get a much greater compensation. Uh, and the, the challenge that really happens is if we have someone who's still in and they get sick or, you know, um, that, that's difficult, but I mean, principals try their best to avoid if they can find any kind of way from not having that bus run. Uh, I mean, they always try to call and say, if you have transportation, you know, it'd be helpful, but they try to, when they can, uh, you don't like doubling the route because it, I mean, we've got some buses now at six o'clock or later, depending on the school and where they travel, getting home. So you double route, you're talking eight, eight thirty, nine o'clock at night. That's not good for especially small babies. And so, you know, um, I don't have the fix. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a statewide, probably nationwide problem. I think we've really got to really push legislators to, to fund, to provide more funding for everything, especially there. Cause we know it's an area where we've got a lot of gaps and, um, it's, it's just difficult. It's hard. I mean, cause used to, we didn't worry about that years ago, but now it's, it's a challenge.
I would say with the funds though, because we, we don't want to end up like schools like in Forsyth County and, and districts like that where they didn't have any buses. I mean, they didn't have the bus drivers to accommodate several schools. And so they went to the point of just not having any buses run for X number of days until they could fix the problem. We don't want to end up doing it. So when you start putting people in the cafeteria, dropping the bus, it's a lot of things you gotta take into consideration. Cause most time those people are a lot older than, than the normal bus drivers. So you gotta look at the health issues. Can they maintain a, do a full daily job in the cafeteria and then get off the, got the cafeteria and drive a bus for three or four hours?
Well, and, and one thing, and right now we're not really doing that with child nutrition because that was obviously with them having to get it for breakfast. All that was just a challenge. Uh, one thing we can look at too, and I'd go back to sort our policy is, you know, out the gate, we can, for any classified, which we know we have some folks that are grandfathered, depending on what year that was. Um, but you know, we can make a condition of future classified positions that you, the bus license has to be done within X period of time, or you could be terminated for not getting it. And that can be done. Other districts have started doing that. Um, you know, that's, that's something to think about. Um, I mean, that's something the board did, several boards of years ago that classified staff had to go get their license. Uh, but what, what's helping us now is we have some teachers who have stepped up to help now. Ms. Spalding has driven a bus. You know, so, uh, Mr. Weimer has driven and so we had, and, um, you know, so we, we have people that, that help us try to do that. We want to try to have some backup folks too, because you think about if you had an emergency, you got to evacuate campus. You don't have folks on, you know, who have bus licenses. Uh, and we've had that happen before. Ms. White Smith was principal of the town primary when that happened, gas leak and, uh, they had to, they had to do quite a bit. Of course, then we didn't have that problem. Folks could hop on, but I want to think in an emergency, I'd have to get forgiveness. I think I, I, I let my license expire several years ago when I wasn't teaching band anymore. But, um, you know, I think I'd have to hop on a bus and drive it to get them there at least.
How many bus drivers do we have just in this?
I think it's sixty-six, Ms. Harrison.
The last count I had, it was sixty-six.
I think that's right.
And how many subs?
There's a lot of subs.
You get that number four. Yeah, we'd have to, we'll check bus garage more, get the total number of, of who we had in the subs. And you got some that say, I only want to drive for this bill. So that gets complicated and, you know, um, and so, you know, um, we, and, and when they, when they actually apply, they put preference of schools, just like with our actual teaching substitutes. Um, you know, we try to get folks to go countywide if they will, but sometimes they specify that, you know, I'm willing to help. But right now, if they're willing to do one place and we can get them in and they're committed and faithful, it's, it's worth it to us to help us.
What I'll do is just, I won't read this just for the sake of professionalism and then also for the sake of time. Um, I will also not read it because of the grammatic, um, errors. Want to kind of go in. I want to go in and dissect and send it back to you on Facebook. And then lastly, um, because of the profanity. So I'll send it out to everyone and you all can see what folks are saying and how they were affected just because it's public knowledge and they have it out there on Facebook and some other folks coming on it. So the next thing is I received an anonymous letter, uh, sometime ago and I was wondering if anyone else received it on the board.
In reference to?
It was, I don't know, it had no return address. In fact, I tried to do my own best again. Yeah, it had no return address. It was addressed to me and it had mine. Well, it was a copy because they held it up to the light and it wasn't a printed version from the printer. It was a copy of something that was already printed. Said something about, um, curriculum and educating students and they have it as dear board member. Now whoever it was was very clever because it was mailed and it was not displaced in my mailbox, but it was stamped Fayetteville. So whoever that was, I don't know if it was somebody in this room, not to be accused of it, could have been my next door neighbor, whoever it was. They went to Fayetteville and then mailed it to me. So I'll see if I can, I hope I didn't, uh, misplace it. Again, it's hard to go in and share things. You don't know where it's coming from. So, um, I thought that everyone received it, but if not, I'll send it to the board.
Uh, what's your, have things that tell them that?
Something about curriculum and.
A lot of times they send stuff here or I mean, when I've done that or, you know, I'll get a copy.
An issue with the curriculum or it said it, it was making a suggestion?
Just say it wasn't, um, an issue. I think it was more so be mindful of what we're teaching our students and some of the things that we may say. Something along those lines. I didn't give it much thought normally. I'm, I'm into it. Just saying, dear board member, didn't say, it didn't have it. The envelope was addressed to me, but the letter itself. So I'm thinking, I thought it went to everyone when it said, oh, dear board member. But I'd be glad to share it.
I hadn't, I hadn't seen anything here.
You said you did?
I did not know. I didn't receive anything here.
That's it. That's all I have. Uh, board chair report, um, just, uh, you know, we had a, uh, huge, uh, sharing of things on Facebook with different schools with teacher appreciation weeks. We're certainly appreciative of, of all our teachers and what they do and the time they uh, they put in, um, to our students, uh, cafeteria workers. Obviously, you know, none of these folks get paid for for the, for the duties that they do. Uh, uh, certainly appreciate, um, uh, what they do. Just, you know, uh, just make sure we're representing, um, professional and we're out board members, uh, being positive, support, good listeners. Uh, getting our feedback, uh, back to the district office, uh, as is warranted. Um, and just make sure we're thanking, um, thanking our, uh, administrators, our leaders, uh, whenever we come in contact. And we got, you know, obviously we got graduations, a lot of, uh, uh, award ceremonies and different things, uh, coming up here in the next, uh, couple of weeks. A lot of positive stuff going out. Uh, I know negative, uh, obviously. Uh, people tend to jump on the bandwagon with the negative stuff. Uh, but, uh, I would say the positive out, uh, outnumbers, uh, the negative uh, inside our, um, our communities, uh, as well as our county when it comes to schools. So I appreciate, uh, everybody here and, uh, everybody in the district office for what you guys do. But we thank you guys. Appreciate you.
I want to, um, add to that, um, I don't want to elaborate on it too much. There was a situation that took place and was brought to my attention of a district employee that made some very negative comments to a student in a restaurant. They were using profanity and lack of a better way of putting it, they used the N word. Very unprofessional. The video was sent to me and they wanted to address the, the board as a whole. What the intentions of uh, going a little further with it. And, um, they had planned to come and actually speak to the board as a whole during an actual official meeting. And they contacted some, um, some personnel outside of the general area at the state level that we're gonna, that we're gonna help them with this. Now there was a situation similar to this that took place in Columbus County. And that situation didn't turn out good for that district employee. Uh, well, this person, uh, that person was a district employer. This person a little bit different. But it still, I just say, I just want to add to what you're saying. In the public, everybody's watching. Everybody watching even when you're, when you're out doing what you do and and enjoying time with your family and friends and, uh, ju- just be mindful. Uh, I include it. I have to try to do it too, uh, to catch myself sometimes because I, I try not to disrespect anyone, but sometimes person, people might bring things to me and they try to attack me as if I'm the advocate for the district. I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm just here to do my part.
Can, can I jump in, chime in real quick? And if somebody sends you a letter and to board chair and Gary should know that should have been spoke about in closed session instead of having all this speculation starting.
I didn't see anybody sent me a letter.
Well, you were saying somebody brought it to your attention and you're
I was basically adding.
Making a big wide thing that.
Adding to what the, the, the chair stated and I just said, I just wanted to add that because that, those things happen. All I'm saying is that I agree with what he's saying. That's all I'm saying. And if you take me any further than that, then you misled.
No, I, I got misled then.
Well, okay. We make mistakes. So just staying corrected moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Rex?
Uh, thank you. I'll, I'll, uh, be as brief as possible. Uh, we are, we have started the EOG, uh, testing window. I started today. Uh, EOC is starting next week. Uh, the test security guidelines, uh, do not allow board members to visit schools during testing. And so you're not, uh, just want to make you aware of that. That's just, that's not our rule. That's from the testing security. That's because deals with governing boards and they don't want to, you know, we, they're tightening down test security, but nothing against anybody. It's just want to make you aware of that. And otherwise, no problem. Uh, our, uh, we did ELA today, uh, and K eight math will be tomorrow. Science for grades five and eight will be Thursday, uh, and then those makeups will start Friday. And then Wednesday, twenty-eighth starts high school first second, uh, third and fourth period. Uh, presentation to the commissioners on the budget went well on our end. And I'll send this all to you, uh, this afternoon. We received the proposed budget. And, uh, you know, we asked for a pretty significant amount above and beyond on the current expense. Our total increase was fifty thousand dollars of the over one million we asked for. That fifty thousand, what Ms. Harrison and Ms. Brown and I were looking, the only thing that we can believe that that was for, that was exactly fifty thousand was the coaching supplements. Uh, but nothing, and, and again, that's, you know, we'd have to get more information in, but that's what we can tell on our request. And so that did not do anything with cost of living, uh, potential increases for local employees. So it's going to be real tight if we don't get more than fifty thousand dollars if there's state mandated increases that come. Uh and so uh there will be a public hearing, if you all want to attend that, on to get comments on the budget, the whole thing. Uh and that's Monday, June second at six thirty. Uh typically, and, and my years as superintendent, usually when we get this, it comes right back to be the same thing at the final. Uh and but uh, you know, capital outlay, obviously, uh they're telling the same thing, we have uh sales tax. Uh I think folks, um you know, there's, there's some capital reserve, they're gonna be looking at potential that we could utilize. Uh uh we are still having to pay a Q uh SCAB bond on the old Tar Heel floor for two more years. That's the school we tore down, still had to pay two more years on the floor that was replaced there before it went out. There's ten payments on Tar Heel School. Uh when you listen to what we shared, we're gonna give the school system seven, seven million dollars to make up the difference. They borrowed the seven million dollars, we're making the payment out of our money. Five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-three, uh I'm sorry, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, that's coming out of what would be regular capital. So when we got rid of the debt on Eastern West Bladen, that was nine hundred and some thousand, we were still paying the same amount, the payment was going lower. Um and so uh we have this not new money to the school system. It's coming out of what would be coming to us if we didn't have to do it, so that was not, that was, they just borrowed the money on our behalf, but we're paying the bill. Uh and so that's listed on, on here, I'll send this all to you all, but uh I was hoping for more than that, cause um you know, again, we, we gotta treat our employees the same, so if state gets an increase, locals gotta give it, child nutrition's got to give it, bus drivers gotta get it. Somebody's got to pay the bill. Uh at the end of the day, if we get into a tight spot, it's on the county commissioners to build a school system out. So that statutorily, they've gotten to provide whatever it is, if we get into a bind toward the end of the year to make us whole. Uh and so, but I hope it'll get there, I think we're trying to do some smart decisions and a lot of unknowns with the federal government um on, on those loans, things, on my loans, uh on those uh grants and programs, we know some are gonna be trimmed. Uh and so it's just a, a tough time right now. And for, to, to do financial planning at least.
So we got fifty grand.
That's all we got.
Out of a million four.
Current expense, we got
Four, seven, six millions is what we asked for, and we got fifty thousand dollars.
Thing on our request, that was exactly fifty thousand, and I agree that needs to be done, but that's the only thing that was in our mind that we gave the additional. They do have the uh SRO money separate, and uh Ms. Harrison, Ms. Brown, we're gonna share something, share that with you all at the next meeting, kinda where we are, cause they're having to go through right now, um and there's some discrepancies and questions about that invoice, and we have not paid it. And so Yes, so Ms. Harrison uh is working with the county to try to see what's going on there. Uh but we'll have, we weren't prepared for the night for that, cause it just
The reason why I see what I see
They're going back for, we'll have a report next month to kinda see where we are. But uh it was, you know, what the SRO allocation, and that's them paying for six. Uh and I don't know, and this was based on
They don't mean in the county.
The county, so we've got three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars that's in the SRO allocation. The challenge is, we're using some of that to match grant funding. We didn't get the grant funding until late. Uh the office who does the SRO safety grants, they took them out of DPI and moved them to the SBI office. So there's disconnect, cause all the allocations for the school system come from DPI. You got this office that's been moved to the SBI office. And, and like right now, and I had to ask principals not to complete a report, because we didn't know about it, and they're asking them things that had nothing to do with our grants, so uh we, we got, I had a seven thirty webinar this morning that, that we talked about that, so we're saying, we're not, we're gonna, we're not gonna get out anything right now till we know what's going on. So a big disconnect there on that.
And the three hundred and sixteen thousand, they are showing as a separate line item for the SROs, just came out of our amount at the top, our current expense. So when you get it, you'll see that current expense amount. And they, all they did was last year, it was like eight billion something, this year it's seven. But they took the three hundred and sixteen out and just put it in a different line items, I'll let you, but it can give us any extra. So you'll see that whenever We just got that
So that was from the county, right?
So this is the proposed, if, if, I mean, I encourage you, I mean, um I would reach out to them. We did get a, a unique request. Um and obviously, cause you know, when we do, doing capital outlay, you're planning about what you would like to do. You don't necessarily have your prices, cause you may not be on the bid yet, so you don't have a, a vendor price or anything. They want us to provide them quotes to vendors, all that, we weren't at that point yet, you gotta give us the money first, so then we can, you know, go out and then bid. We know we're gonna have two hundred thousand dollars, so we're gonna go out and bid the project, and then we can give you that. But um that, we've never been asked that before, but we told them, we, we don't have it, we got, the request came with Harrison on Wednesday, they wanted it Friday morning. That was unreasonable.
They wanted to be in Friday.
You know, you don't go out to bid, if you don't have money to pay for something, you don't go out and get bids for. And so that's kinda backwards, but we They never had that request before. Um and, you know, we want to have a good support relationship, you know, but we need to be, you know, we gotta work together. Uh we don't have taxation authority, so we can't generate revenue. Um and so um I'll send you all a copy of this. Uh and it says, if you want, if you all, individual want to make comment at night, let, and nobody at Thursday, if you want to dress
That's kinda embarrassing to be honest with you. I mean, we didn't get anything last year, right? Nothing at all. Fifty thousand this year, I mean, come on now, we're, you know We got aging facilities, we got, you know, people that need to get paid, we got cost of living, and we got fifty thousand dollars. I mean, the tax money that's coming in through the county, it somehow has gotta be separated and, and supporting what we're doing here. Uh trying to keep our schools, our people, like coaches obviously is important, but fifty thousand dollars to drop on the bucket. I mean, there's, there's coaches in counties getting paid three, four times uh what we're doing. And that's just to say the least, the cafeteria workers, uh but, you know, uh people that drive buses, fifty thousand dollars, I'd almost wanna give it back to them. And say, I mean, can't you get back, get, get something in a, in, you know, a different way? I mean, that's, that's, I mean, as a county and the amount of revenue that's coming in here, that's embarrassing. Fifty thousand dollars to buy that out by three hundred and sixty-five days, and tell me what that looks like. Uh it's absolutely, as a county commissioner, I'm telling you, and you can listen to what I gotta say, that's embarrassing. Okay, we, our kids, our parents, our teachers, our staff deserve more than that. And I, I, as a, is a, as what, as a parent that has got kids in school that's been here. Uh family members that's been working in this uh system for over thirty years. To give the board, to give the county school system fifty thousand dollars is a freaking embarrassment, okay? That's absolutely asinine to even say, hey, here's fifty grand, what can you do with it? What's fifty thousand dollars gonna do with, how many teachers we got in these schools? Huh? How many we got? We got more than, what, what's that gonna pay for? What's that gonna take care of? If I was a county commissioner, I'd be embarrassed that I even sent that back to the county schools. And half of what's on the board of commissioners used to be on the board of education. So they understand what we're having to deal with here. So as a, as a citizen of this county, somebody that's voted for all these folks. And of course, I got voted into my office, and I respect anybody but fifty thousand dollars. What in the wide world of sports is fifty thousand dollars gonna do for Bladen County Schools? That won't even buy a, that won't buy, that would, that don't even give us, that don't give us anything for anything.
That, right now with
I mean, if we had to pay taxes on that, it's forty percent, and that, I mean, what is that? You understand? So to go and stand before somebody that, that governs what our county does, and the amount of things that we have to pay for and put out and what we're seeing in the media out there that's going on, absolutely embarrassing. We figured it out, based off, it was probably the coaching supplement. Fifty thousand dollars, how many coaches we got? Well, how many schools we got? Twelve? How many sports we got? Divide that by thirty. But what is that? That ain't nothing, man, that don't wanna buy a pack of crackers and a Pepsi. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, if I, if I was sitting on the county commissioner, and I'd probably get Facebook, it's whatever, I don't care, it's embarrassing. Absolutely embarrassing that we would get fifty thousand dollars and we asked for one point four, seven, six and some change.
And we needed every dime of it.
And we need it, because we got
Benefit in the future of the county.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we should be working together to figure out ways. I was reading an article not too long ago where these, where the, the boards came together and figured out a way to subsidize uh uh salaries for coaches, man, it was unbelievable how they came together and figured that out here. And it wasn't like a hundreds of dollars, it was like, you know, it was a couple million, a few million, here we are getting fifty thousand, man, we're Bladen County, but my God. There's a lot of things going on around us, there's people that are moving in, there's, and we're getting fifty thousand dollars. I don't even know if I'd have signed my name to that check and sent it over here. It's embarrassing. And the county commissioner should be embarrassed. Because this is, we're trying to provide a future for our children, and we gotta support what's going on inside our schools. And we just got a check from the county for fifty thousand dollars. Absolutely, and ridiculous.
The meeting that you attended, I think you said that you attended
I wouldn't even want to stand up there before them, I'd be embarrassed to go stand up in front of them, say, really, you just gave me fifty thousand dollars to, we got, what, twelve schools? Right? We got all the people that work inside of them, we got older schools that need repairs.
Got Smithfield.
I hope somebody's listening out there, cause that's, it's, it's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous.
Couple of things, uh you all have envelopes for your graduation tickets. You got two tickets for each one, early college is Friday at uh ten o'clock. And then June sixth, West Bladen, ten o'clock, and I'm sorry, BCC's auditorium will be early college. Uh Friday, June sixth, ten o'clock, West Bladen at East Town Middle Gym. Same day, East Bladen, that was the town middle school gym. Uh will be closed next Monday for Memorial Day. Uh May twenty-eighth through thirtieth, and June second to third will be early release days, that will allow teachers to finalize grades and everything. Uh and if we um, and also um to do closeout for the year. Uh I've already mentioned a resolution, I'll get that drafted, or Mr. Grady on that, and uh we'll put that as an action item for the June meeting. Uh I'll send you all, you've all might've got a couple things from School Board Association on the bills that met crossover, I'll just forge all what I have on those updates. Um school calendar bill is getting some traction, the one with the flexibility, so it might be something we'll look at if that passes. Uh letting it start a little earlier in line more directly with the community college system, early college can do it now, rest of schools, there's about a week or so off on that. Uh next board meeting is June ninth, that's six o'clock, and Chairman Secretary Board Members, thank you all for your support, that's all I have.
Sir, can I get a motion on the floor to adjourn, please?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
All who's in favor by saying aye, all opposed.